Again, Mike, you think with the presentation?
Um, before we come back from recess.
Are you? Yeah, I mean, are you sure that you're on there right now, Bill?
I'm going to be in a second. Hold on.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I don't see it.
Yep, you might be in a second, so everybody might be live. That looks better. Is anybody on the website?
I am, but I don't see. I still just see the uploads.
Give it a good minute, thirty seconds to a minute. It, we found that out with finance.
Yeah, sometimes it does take.
Okay.
And yeah, I think if you wanted to start over and just explain to everyone who's watching for YouTube that for some reason it wasn't working and we stopped the meeting to fix it.
Yeah, when we come back from recess, I'll just mention.
Yeah.
Okay.
How can I tell if it's?
Are you just on the city, the city?
No, I, yeah, I'm on the, well, no, I'm on the, um, the YouTube page.
Refresh it.
I am. But I don't know where.
I think we're all on because it's showing me that we are.
Oh, yeah, I see it, I think.
Yeah, I see it and I hear the audio.
Yep.
Fabulous.
Awesome, let me get a hold of.
Yeah, Katie Abbott said she can see us.
All right, let me get a hold of that here.
Yeah, it's up. I can see you and hear you. Perfect. So whenever you want, yeah.
All right. It being seven twenty-three PM on stage. I'll call the special, the school committee back into order. Thank you all for your patience. We were informed about twenty minutes through our school committee meeting here that there was an issue with the live stream onto YouTube. Has since been corrected and we are now live on YouTube channel. You can find this up on the city's website, www.gardner-ma.gov. Or go into YouTube and search in Gardner. You will be able to see the live broadcast that is there. Due to the fact that a lot of our residents and parents in particular may not have access to be through their cable box. We will be going from the beginning of the superintendent's presentation again to ensure that most members of the public have access to the presentation that is being presented regarding the reopening of schools. We will not go back to items that have previously been voted upon, but since this is the main item of discussion, we will go back to this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we, can I just make, can, I think somebody's microphone is, there's a lot of feedback right now, like air movement. I don't know if we could all just mute.
There we go. Okay, is that better? All right. And so I'm gonna share my screen again. So my apologies, I'm sure that technical glitch was entirely my fault somehow. I must have messed up something on that, so my apologies to everyone. So we're gonna start again with the district opening plan. Thank you very much. So, you know, as I said before, I just like, there's a lot of people who put a lot of time and effort into this district reopening team and into this program to reopen schools. We have administrators at the district level who put in a lot of extra time. We have all our principals, assistant principals, our dean of students, our special education administrators, not to mention all of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, people coming in constantly when really they're not being paid to come in. They just want things to run smoothly when school starts. So I appreciate all the time and effort that put in. Our director of facilities, Wayne Anderson, Becky McCaffrey, our phenomenal nurses, leader. I just think that with all these people, I'm very lucky to work in such a district that really cares about our students and how our district runs. And a very supportive school committee as well, who's been very willing to let me know how you feel and actually give me feedback on the plans as we go. So thank you very much. So with that, Jim, I'm just gonna put you on mute for a second, okay? There we go. Technical difficulties. All right, to the agenda. First, we'll review our vision and our goals for the programs, what our one plan and three models is and what that means. Our teams and their planning and preparation throughout the summer. I'll go over our timeline. We'll talk about balancing safety and health, the safety and health of our whole child. Evaluating our capacity of coming back to school, what that looks like and what that means. We're gonna talk about the family input that we've received. We've received input from over half the district, or just, excuse me, just about half the district. And then I'll talk about my recommendations to the school committee for the plan for opening, opening of school. But there's still plenty of time for more community input as we now are at the point where we have a generalized plan. As details of the, of our specific plans come to light, we will be surveying and reaching out to families to give their input and to help guide how we make decisions. So when it comes to Gardner Public Schools, I look at Gardner Public Schools as we are the movers and shakers of the world because we move children. Our job is to engage our children, the hearts, their minds, their passions for every student. So they can, we prepare them to lead meaningful, productive and fulfilling lives. That's what our goal is. We also defy and disrupt any destructive destiny of zip code, family income, race or diagnosis. Our job is to make sure kids get what they need. We break down barriers to reach every student. We're gonna have to do that extra well when it comes to any different type of educational model. I want to emphasize that this is preliminary. I have, we have to submit a plan to DESI by seven thirty-one. That's why we're going over this plan tonight, but this is preliminary. We will be gathering more information from families and other community members. The school committee will be weighing in more on what our final plans will be and that, those will be submitted by August tenth. And I want to talk about what the one plan, three models is. So when it comes to Gardner Public Schools' plan for reopening, our plan includes essentially three models, and you can see they're numbered one, two and three. Way over to the left, you see return to school without restrictions. Well, this is when COVID nineteen is behind us to a level where there are no further concerns about the spread of COVID nineteen. We may still have some due diligence, but we wouldn't have to continue on with social distancing and restrictions will be lifted by our government. For models one, two and three, model one is actually returning to school, all students returning to school. And what that would look like, how we socially distance, what would, what would our process be to make sure that kids are able to come back in the building in every room and be able to do so safely for our students and our staff. Our hybrid learning model is when some students are going to school in, and get in-person learning one day, and at the same time, half the district is actually participating in remote learning. And then at some point they swap. And so those people that were, that were doing remote learning, go to in-school learning, and those people were doing in-school learning, go to remote learning. And then remote learning is a full remote learning. And I'm not gonna say like it was from March to June. I think there's an important distinction here. I've heard from many family members, our CPAC chair, our school committee, and as well as teachers, who, who saw such a great disparity in the differences in the level of teaching in different schools and even within, within grade levels. And that had a lot to do with the fact that everybody was trying hard, but we were responding to a crisis. I will say the community was very accepting and understanding because in March we were not expecting to just close school down and change everything about the way we teach. Fortunately, there were some teachers who were able to take to remote learning, like, the way I put it is like a fish to water. They had the skills, many of them had already been using tech, technology in their classrooms and in their curriculum. So it was an easy transition for them. But there were many teachers who, through no fault of their own, didn't have these tools, hadn't had the experience of training and were thrust into this world of remote learning, changing everything and every, all their practices and their, the ways that they've learned and practiced over the years and how to change all of that. So it's very important that as we move forward with any type of remote learning that we support our teachers, making sure they have the tools they need, they have the support, they have the training, and we make sure that they can institute that, institute those practices in a remote learning model. And we can, we can have some accountability measures so parents feel more confident that we are creating a robust educational program even through remote learning model. So all three models have to meet time on learning. So for those of you who don't, who aren't familiar with this, we go to school, students go to school for a hundred and eighty days. And elementary school students attend school for nine hundred hours for the year. And secondary school students, middle school and high school, attend school for nine hundred ninety hours per year. So we have to meet those requirements. Now, now recently, the commissioner actually changed the number of days that we need to go to school for the year, for just this year during COVID nineteen. And he's reduced the number of student days, student learning days to one hundred and seventy days. Now with that, elementary school students go to, go to school for a product, a minimum of five hours. And secondary school students go for five point five hours. So those, that time on learning for a hundred and seventy days still needs to happen. Our number of hours per year is reduced for elementary school students by about fifty, by fifty hours and fifty-five hours for secondary school students. So these time on learning hours can be delivered in person, remotely or through a hybrid model. And finally, we have to prioritize groups who are disenfranchised with our schools, our most vulnerable students. We have to do all we can to reach them. These are English language learners, students with disabilities. Our students from families who don't have a reliable and don't have the technological resources to be able to access education in a different type of environment. We also have to identify those students who are significantly behind. Our youngest learners and students who are disengaged as well. All of those groups, we need to look at the most significant needs and find out how do we reach those students. They might be getting thing, more services, different services. The same service delivered in a different way. We have to make sure we're being as creative as possible to reach all students. And that's what equity is really all about, making sure every child gets what they need to break down any barriers so they can succeed. So I did want to mention the different levels of teams. The first team is our district team, which is made up of twenty-two members. And as you can see, the superintendent, business manager, the mayor, union executives, teachers, our special CPAC chair, Katie Abbott, who's just been a phenomenal advisor for us. I have to say Becky McCaffrey has been wonderful as the, as the school nurse leader to make sure that they're leading that charge. We also have teachers, special education teachers on our team as well. This team sets the parameters for the building teams. What, what we have come to learn is that whenever we're devising plans for the districts, what is necessary in Waterford Street School might be very different for Gardner Middle School, which might be different than Gardner High School, which might be different than Gardner Academy. So it's important that the teams look at their facilities, their structures, who they have for human resources and how they design the best plan possible for their school to support our stu, their, their students. So each building level team is made up of the principal and all the administrators on that team, teachers, special education staff, parents. There's always a union rep and a school committee person on each one of those teams. So we're getting different perspectives as we're moving, as we're moving the, the plans forward. Additionally, we have a nimble safety team with our, led by our school nurse leader, Becky McCaffrey. We also have the public health director, Lauren Saunders, from the city on that team. Our facilities director, we have a union rep, Heather Frank Core, our facilities director is Wayne Anderson. And we have a teacher who's also a former pediatrician in Paul DeMore. And this group actually looks at issues in the schools. Teachers can bring up issues, parents can bring up issues, and we can look at what's the best solution to mitigate any risk of spreading COVID nineteen. So this is a team of professionals who's ready to really work and advise us. I say ready to, they've been working very hard, going through the schools, advising principals to address some of the problems that have been brought to their attention to make sure that we open schools safely. So those are the different teams that we have. These teams will continue to be in place as we keep moving forward to check, to make sure that the programs are running well. And this was the first, was the first meeting of the district reopening team, setting the parameters for the school-based team. So with the school-based team, first off, if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the screen, you'll see there are three areas of focus, and they're in this order, and this is the primary order. The first thing that they focus on is safety. That's physical safety, walking in the building. We want to make sure kids aren't getting hurt or physically sick. Those are things that we want to make sure that kids are safe, that our staff, our teachers are safe when they come in the building. Second, we look for emotional and social wellness. And third is our learning environment. So when we're looking at the order of priorities, safety's first, then the individual emotional and the social health of, of students, and then finally, then finally, the learning environments. So the priority on populations are, we always focus on staff, students and families, again, in that order. And the reason we focus on staff first is because when you really think about it, if you've ever ridden a plane and the first thing they do is they say when the, when the airbag drops, take care of yourself as the parent first before you put your child's mask on. And the reason is if you're not okay, then it's very difficult to take care of others. So it's important that our staff feel safe and are safe and that they're emotionally doing well for their social emotional wellbeing if they're going to be taking care of kids. And then families. So we're always focused on those three populations, again, in that order. We, we have the CDC guidelines as reference, as well as the state governor's guidelines. And then over on the right, you'll see the different scenarios. Scenario one, when we, when we laid, rolled this out was, okay, scenario one, it was actually kids coming back to school when, again, we're, we're beyond COVID, COVID nineteen. Scenario two is when everyone comes back to school with significant social distancing. Scenario three means enhanced social distancing, which really the hybrid model. And scenario four is remote, fully remote learning. And then if you notice, there's actually another line that these teams had to prepare for, and that's being able to switch from one scenario to another overnight. We might have to go from a hybrid model into a remote learning model overnight if there's a significant safety issue. And there were different drivers they looked at, and then the, the steps, the things they needed to do to actually start designing, what's it gonna look like in my school, in our school? So in the timeline for all this, our initial guidance came out on June fifteenth. Right away, we developed the district, district team and the safety team as well. And the building teams started right off at that point as well. So each building team started planning and preparing for, really, now. Then we started to assess the facilities. We looked at the, we created a general structure of the plan with three models. Most recently, we really came up with that, and that's when we designed, that's when we designed the parent surveys. There were many parents who said, you know, we, we don't have any input, we don't have the input. It was very difficult for us to gather input when we really didn't have anything to present. We wanted to make sure that we had something to give you so you could answer with, with an informed answer. And so that's when we started doing the, yes.
Mark, if I could just interrupt, I think the other part of that is too, is that the guidance from the state has actually been rolling out slowly. So sometimes when we did get some guidance, we didn't have other guidance to help, like even transportation and those types of pieces. That is recent. In fact, we've got remote learning guidance as of last Friday. So part of it's been, we're just trying to gather all that information too.
Very true, very true. Guidance has been coming out constantly. Thank you. And then, so we're to submit our, our preliminary plan by July thirty-first. And then we're actually going to create a way for families to continue to give us input now that we've designed a more detailed plan. Moving, to design a more detailed plan to move forward, to submit by August tenth. And then we're gonna make sure, we're gonna, the school, the school building teams are actually gonna continue working, and then we're going to make sure that we're planning well to communicate with parents. What does this mean when your child walks through our door? What are the processes? What are the things that you should be concerned with? How should your child heal themselves during the day? How do you now pick up your child from school? There are literally, I want to say an infinite, I'm sure there's not an infinite, but there's such a vast number of things that change. I, this, this time for us is the most challenging time in education that I've had in my twenty years' experience. Never have I seen us have to change everything in the operations of what we do and how we deliver education, how we support students, how we communicate with parents, everything. To even how students have to walk down the halls and board the bus, everything has changed. And so it's very important that we, that we are thoughtful in how we teach and support our students and our staff to make sure that everyone is safe and that kids get the education that they deserve. So my first charge that we had for the district, the commissioner asked us, asked all districts to prioritize a full return to school of all students when assessing our capacity. So to figure out whether or not we had the, the, the school, the room in the schools, the room on the buses, did we have enough resources to actually have all students come back to school and have a full return to school? And that's what we're supposed to prioritize when we're looking at capacity. And so with that, you know, I have to say, of course, safety was first. Because in order to have a successful educational program, students and staff need to be safe and to feel safe. You know, I, I know there's some, you know, some controversy about COVID nineteen, some, some people believe it is what it, they say it is, other people don't believe that. I think it's really important that I point out that we follow, you know, our, our, our state government. When they're, when they actually give us two-thirds of the, of our budget, they decide that, they design the parameters for our schools to follow. We have to follow these requirements, and ultimately, our decisions are informed by the guidance that we receive by, from the state, our state government. And any parent, I do, I want to put this out there right off the bat. Any parent who's concerned about their child returning to school during the pandemic can opt into a fully remote learning program offered by the district. So we will make sure that we have a program for any child to participate in. Because I think this is, you know, a difficult time for many parents who are struggling with whether or not to send their child back to school during the pandemic, even when safety measures are, are in place. I want people to feel safe and confident about our schools, and again, we want to support all families in our district. And it's also a balanced view of risks. So when we look at the, the physical risk of getting this COVID nineteen virus, that's the physical risk. However, we have a lot of other things that are going on when we're looking at risk for children. If you look in the lower right corner, this last, lack of access to essential services that kids get when they're in the building, we can identify students who need those services and make sure that we connect them with the services. There's actually, when they're coming into school, there's a reduction of, of, when they're coming into school, there's a reduced amount of child abuse, believe it or not. What they've found is during remote learning, there was a, an increase, a significant increase in the number of reported injuries and deaths from, from child abuse. So it's important that kids are coming into school so we can make sure that, again, we're supporting families and we're identifying kids in need. The social emotional impact has been great. It's been almost, almost three percent of the parents said that, that their child was hurt socially or, and or emotionally from not being in school for an extended period of time. Of course, there's a loss of learning because nothing can replace our professional staff working directly and live with our students. This nutritional insecurity, we're pretty fortunate in Gardner where, again, our food service program, you know, delivered, delivered food to, to students and, and had our stations, you know, during the entire pandemic. And now we've actually, through a grant, we've purchased a, a summer eats program, and I just want to put in a quick plug for that because it, it's still going on every day, Monday through Friday, eleven to noon. And you can actually pick up a meal for any child in your household. You just go up and you ask for the number of meals and you get them. The, the program survives by the number of meals we give out. So by no means, don't, please don't be shy. This is a great program. They're also giving out boxes of, and I forget which days they're on, but they give out boxes of fresh produce. So it's just unbelievable, and I've been very proud of our district. But the summer eats van is actually still delivering food now, which is something we've really wanted to get off the ground the last couple of years. And this year, with the number of grants we've had, we've been able to do that. So we're able to address that to a certain level. But again, when kids are coming into school, we know they're eating. And then this loss of parental employment. I've had many parents, you know, who've come to you and said, look, your kids, you know, our kids just need to go back to school. We have to go back to work. And I do understand that, and not to mention, you know, loss of parental employment also impacts all of these other things. So it's, it's very important that we do our best. By the same token, my first and primary focus is on that, the physical health and safety of our children and staff. So with that, when we were looking at the capacity for full return to schools, where all students going back to school, we did research on each one of the schools we have. So Waterford Street School has an expected enrollment of four hundred and eleven students in the upcoming year. Now, there are two levels of social distancing that I'm gonna talk about, the six feet of social distancing and this three feet of social distancing. Now, our guidance from the state has said that it is appropriate to have students three feet apart as long as they're wearing masks, and that's proper social distancing. So if we look at a three feet, a, a three feet of social distancing, we actually can fit, so this is just about fitting the number of students in the classrooms. We can fit almost double four hundred and eleven students in our schools with social distancing of three feet. But if we expand that to six feet, then we, we don't have the capacity. Same thing with Elm Street, as you can see, twelve hundred, almost thirteen hundred students can fit in the school with three feet of social distancing. But once we move to six feet, we can only fit four hundred and twenty-nine. Gardner Middle School is similar, as well as Gardner High School. Gardner Academy is the only school, we have approximately sixty students that, that attend Gardner Academy. So all the students will be able to fit actually in Gardner Academy. And again, though, if, and just to make sure everybody knows, Gardner Academy's for learning technology is actually our drop-up prevention program. Our job is to meet students who are, we want to make sure, don't drop out of school and succeed getting that, not only getting that high school diploma, but being prepared to go on for life, whether to go on to college, the military, or go right on to work. We want to make sure that they have those, that support. So actually, Gardner Academy would be able to fit all students in the school. Well, let's talk about social distancing a little bit deeper. So this is actually research that was given to us, again, by the state. It incorporates, I think it was over six hundred different scientific empirical research articles that were, that were originally looked at, and this boiled down to about a hundred and seventy-two articles. And what you see here is, on the left, is the absolute risk of getting, of getting COVID nineteen, of transmitting COVID nineteen. And as you see along the bottom, it says distance, and by the way, that's in M, which is meters, one meter is approximately for, for those of you who don't know, it's approximately three feet. So at one meter of distance, and if you look at the, they actually pulled out the, the part of the graph that between one and two, when you see that zoomed in portion, you can see schools are actually considered low risk to intermediate risk, depending on where the students are at that point and where, what classroom they're typically in, or if they're in the nurse's office, might actually dictate whether or not it's a low risk or intermediate risk. High risk is the, is the blue that you'll see above, and that's actually not really zoomed in. You can't really see that on the zoomed part. The reason that's there is that's actually for healthcare. So this is all of these different research articles. But when you look at the green line at the bottom, which is the low-risk areas, that's basically sitting in a classroom, there's not a difference in terms of three feet and six feet of social distancing. So what the, what the state has said is, they said three feet of social distancing with a mask is appropriate. Three feet looks like this. So three feet of social distancing, this is a typical classroom with three feet in between each desk. Six feet in the same size classroom looks like this. So as you can see, there's a lot more room in between desks for students to move. Now, one of the things that I'm recommending to the school committee is that we focus on six feet of social distancing. And the reason is because, first off, students need to eat in school. If we're to address some of those other factors that we talked about. When they're eating, they're not gonna be wearing masks, and the new guidance has been, if they're going to eat in their classrooms, And the new guidance has been if they're going to eat in their classrooms, which we can't send all the kids down to the cafeteria. Again, everything has changed about the way we do business. Kids are going to have to eat in the classrooms, which is what the recommendation was from the state. If they're going to do that, they're going to have to take off their masks, which means that the three feet of social distancing won't be enough. The natural movement of students just around the classroom makes it more difficult to maintain that six feet of social distancing. This is not where students are just sitting at their desks. They do have to move around throughout the day. And actually, it's required, especially in our younger children, that they are getting up and moving. So the state does recommend six feet of social distancing whenever possible. So, and the state has also limited large groups of people. They have given it's an exception to public schools, but not enough where we could have large groups going to the cafeteria to eat lunch so we can supervise them. So I would be recommending to the school committee that we adopt a six foot social distancing requirement. So again, when we're looking at the capacity, six feet doesn't really meet our needs to have all students return for a full return to school. Additionally, we have busing capacity. So what you see in front of you is what, what they call a 77 passenger bus. And this is what our new company has, NRT. And all the red dots represent students. The yellow dot is a monitor and the blue dot is, is the driver. And so on this bus, we can essentially fit 25 students. And so that makes, this creates another issue. So you can fit 25 passengers on a 77 passenger bus, which is approximately 32% of its actual capacity. The difficulty is we only have nine buses. And even if we wanted to add another nine buses to be able to transport enough students, they don't have the buses, there's no, there's, it's impossible for us to get a second bus to make, to make these runs. So every school would have to have two runs and a staggered start and staggered stop to the day, which then puts a strain on our human resources because we don't have the people to cover that wa, that wide of a, of a school day. So it makes it, again, the capacity just makes it impossible for us to really, to really be able to do a full return to school. Our parents have weighed in on this and I do want to go over that because I think this is an important piece. So when I look at this particular slide, this is when I think that this is the toughest snow call I'll have, ever have to make. Because no matter what decision we make as a school committee, and now I have you to thank to, to share this responsibility. No matter what choice we, we make, as you can see, these are almost perfect thirds. 35% of our families want a full return to school. 35% want full remote. So those are on the two ends of the spectrum. We have 70%, half of each is on each end of this, of the spectrum of, of returning to school. And then almost 30% of our families want a hybrid model. So no matter which model we choose, there will be at least approximately a third of our constituent, excuse me, two thirds of our constituents won't get their first choice. We did also ask what's the second choice? And as you can see, by the way, if you notice this, 1,177 responses. So that's approximately half of our district. So when we looked at second choice, over 50% said that they would like hybrid, whereas 20% and 20, 20% said they want a full return and 26% said they'd want a full remote. And I, I believe that these slides really speak to how parents feel about returning. And so this question asks, if schools opened with a full return, so all students returning to classes in all school buildings daily, what would you do as a family? And less than half, 45, almost 46% of our families said, I would send my children to school as scheduled. So it was 55% said, I mean, I'm not going to do that or I'm unsure. 23% said they were unsure whether or not to send their children to school if we went with a full return. If we implemented a hybrid model, we'd have just over half of our students returning with 60% returning. There's another 14% that said they're unsure. 8% said that they would homeschool their child and 16% said they would participate in the fully remote program. And so again, anybody who wants to participate in the full remote program will have, always have that option, no matter what model we're in. And finally, if we went fully remote, almost 7, 74% of our families said they would participate in the, in the remote. There were 18, almost 19% that said they were unsure. And then it was, I believe, 11 or so percent, or 8%, excuse me, said they would actually homeschool their child. So that's really saying that parents are very concerned about sending their children back to school. They want to make sure that they're doing, this is happening in a safe way. And some people are just very concerned in this, in this environment right now, dealing with COVID-19. No matter what measures we have, they're not going to necessarily feel safe. And that's something that I have to, you know, we have to respect as a school committee, those decisions in this very difficult time. So we need six feet of social distancing because students remove their masks during lunch, because student movement dilutes so the effects of distancing. State recommends it, there's a lack of staffing and building capacity to supervise students. And by the way, bathrooms, bathrooms are not single use. I, I think that's a poorly way to word this. Only one person in the bathroom at a time. We don't just use a bathroom once, then you can't use it for the rest of the day. And then only 45% of our students will, will attend school if we actually have a full return. So that's actually speaking against full return as well. Teachers have concerns for their own personal health and transportation. I, I just frankly, I just don't know how we'll do it. So what I'm recommending, I believe that we can effectively and safely manage, that we cannot effectively and safely manage a full return to school, except for Gardner Academy. I do believe Gardner Academy can't have a full return to school. I do believe we can accommodate a hybrid model. However, I am very concerned about remote learning because in a hybrid model, half of it's remote learning. And we have to make sure that we train and support our teachers and make sure there's, there's a level of communication between the, that the parents know what to expect and how to make sure there's dialogue between parents and students that's very effective. So this, the, the remote portion of a hybrid model works effectively. With that said, I'm actually recommending the first two weeks of, of school should be remote learning only. And this is where, where, where in the first 10 days now, we have professional development given to us by the commissioner, so we'd have 10 days of professional developments to train people in, in, in opening up these programs, creating accounts, doing all the things they need to do to communicate effectively with families. We've actually purchased Remind, which is an app that some of our staff have used individually, but we've now purchased it for the entire district, which will allow our faculty to communicate with, with families. They can call them through the Remind app and not have to worry about using their personal minutes or, you know, giving out their personal cell phone number. It makes it a lot easier, they can tech, it can text directly to families, whichever way they want to be communicated with, it can be email, it can be text, or it can be voicemail. All of that works and it actually has, I think, over 45, I want to say, languages that it translates into. So I think that's very culturally responsive and I think it was a good thing that we're purchasing this particular program. Plus portals is an exceptional program that our secondary schools have been using for years. But we are going to be expecting that at the elementary schools as well. This is the way we're communicating progress through a virtual format. So you'll be able to look at your child's grades on an ongoing basis. We're also working with Classroom Dojo to make sure our early grade teachers are able to access that and utilize that. That's a free app, however, it would be supported now by the district. So before, we had, again, gung ho teachers who really wanted to do some, some wonderful things. So they just created an account on Dojo, which is wonderful. However, I want all of our teachers to be able to do that. And the only way we can do that is to make sure that we're training them and supporting them in the use of Classroom Dojo. Seesaw is another early grade program that not, is similar to Dojo, but it also has some curricular pieces that kids can do online. And it's been a very effective program for many of our, of our, for our teachers and our students. Google Classroom has been in the district for a long time. Some teachers have, again, kind of taken to that like a fish to water and they've been utilizing that right within their curriculum at the secondary level and the older grades, as well as even third and fourth grade at, at Elm Street School. So we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that our teachers are trained in this for our, for our older students and to make sure that our teachers can incorporate this within their educational programming. Actually, so that's my recommendation to this point. I'm just going to take a quick breather and drink a water. But are there any questions at this point?
I have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Do you want to go, Jen?
No, go ahead, Rachel.
Okay, you were talking about prioritizing full time return to school for some groups early on in the slides, such as special education or more intensive needs. You listed early learners on that, pre-K through five. Did you have a goal of getting them back into school more so than the older grades at some point?
Yeah, as, as much as we, as much as we can. That was, so those were the priorities from the state.
Oh, okay.
We're supposed to focus on that as much as we can. It will, it will be difficult, but I think it will be looking at who are the students who are furthest behind in those early grades? Or kids who seem to be falling behind if they're, you know, are first time with us? We might be trying, we're going to be trying to identify those students and make sure that we have some room to increase their time for in-person learning if possible.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. You've made reference a few times now that families can opt into the full remote learning model, which I think is great that they can. If they change their mind and they want to go to either, you know, hybrid or full in classroom, whatever's being offered at that time, is that going to be a difficult process for them? Or is that something they can do?
No, it's a wonderful question, thank you. We don't have the details on that yet. The, the, the guidance right now is that they have to be able to change over within, within a reasonable amount of time. So as we move forward with a much more detailed process and when people opt into this program, you know, I would, I would think would need, you know, a couple of weeks to adjust at least, just to be able to say, okay, now you're going to be riding the bus, now you're going to be coming into the school. Make sure if we need to shift any, any, any services around or make sure we have what, what the child needs before they come back, that just needs to happen. So it's not, it's not a cumbersome process, it's going to be a very simple process for the parent, but it will take some processing from the school to make sure that we're ready to make that shift. So easy transition, there will be a, a brief time where they'll have to continue with that remote learning and then they'll be able to come right back in the school.
Okay, and my last question, um, yeah, my last question is, there was also a survey regarding busing for the families. Did you find that there would be a reduction in busing needs based on that?
Not, not significantly enough yet. So, so I, we've given that list to NRT, our busing company. They're actually going through it to see how this impacts our groups. NRT has been wonderful to work with. We actually designed the, the generalized groups will actually be in alphabetical order. So group one, believe it or not, will be A through J. And K through Z will be group two. So if we're splitting the two groups by alphabet, again, we'll still be looking at, all right, so if children are in the same household, but they have different last, last names that put them in a different group, we're already going through that list that it was a short num, a, a, a small number of kids. We're going to make sure that they're in the same group. But they're going through and finding out, well, would this have a big impact on the number of kids on each bus? There were a number of people who said they wouldn't ride the bus, which, which would help those numbers, but probably not significantly enough to really change our, to change our model. And they're not, they're not held to that. So we do have to plan for them coming back because if a parent said, I now want to send my child to school, we'd still have to be able to support that. So it may for a brief time do that, but parents, we, we would never ask parents to sign their rights away to bus their child to school. So it he, it may help in a, in a short term, but it would always be in the back of my head. We can't like reduce the resources or, you know, say, oh, we have plenty of room now because these kids aren't taking the bus. They might not take the bus for a week and then the parents may decide to change that. And we'd be, be prepared to accept those students right back in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Miss Beliven?
Those, those were actually all the same questions I had too. Because I think, I think it's important, the prioritizing piece especially is that, you know, from, from the state, they've, they are expecting these things to happen and prioritize the children that way. And so, and that's what I was basically asking is that, was that exactly the list that they gave you, which you obviously said was so. And I think the busing piece too, I know, I think you had shared it with us at one of the, the, one of the meetings that we had for the district part. And it didn't seem, I think at that point, there was only like maybe a, I don't even think it was a third of the people who had responded saying they wouldn't use the bus. So obviously, that's not even enough to do that considering how much we have to cut down on the amount of usage. And quite honestly, we don't have bus monitors right now either. So that's another piece we have to work through and figure out how we're going to do and if we're going to do that, so. Yeah, that was it for me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trying to use appropriate wait, wait time. Okay, hearing none. So in, in terms of the hybrid model, we asked families which, which schedule that did most like. And what you see here is, the blue actually represents that students would be in school, some students would be in school Mondays and Tuesdays, while others are remote learning. And then on Thursdays and Fridays, those two groups would switch. And red, you actually see alternating weekly. That's at 30, almost 40%. So it's pretty neck and neck in terms of weekly or Mondays and Tuesdays and Thursdays and Fridays. And then alternating daily, there were 15% that said, they'd like to see that. So in terms of that, I focused a lot on the Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays as the focus for some of the schedules. But I do think we'll be doing another survey now that we've, we've looked at this hybrid model and we've, we've cut, we've zoned in more on what parents are looking for, for the best schedule for their family. And so I'll go over just a few of the, just a few of the ideas. And these are four different models of what it might look like. But frankly, I think with input from other perspectives, there might be more options that we, that we put out there to parents to try to get, again, the best model. So what we have, what you're going to see next is different cohorts scheduled. So I just wanted to explain who the cohorts were. So cohort A would be 50% of the students without significant needs. Cohort B would be the other 50% of students without significant needs. Cohort C are those students who have significantly high needs, which I've described earlier. And then cohort D are those students who opted into a full remote learning program. So this again is the first draft, I want to emphasize, this is the first draft of the hybrid options. And I'll make sure to get this out to parents and families so they can give, give us input. So this is one, one model. And this is actually a combination of weekly, as well as Monday, Monday and Tuesday and Thursday, Friday. So when you're looking at this, students every week, so cohort A and C, so again, that's some of the students with the high needs and then the high need students go to school on Monday and Tuesday, while cohorts B and then the full online learning opt-in kids are doing online learning all day. If you notice Wednesdays, Wednesday's students will be doing remote learning on Wednesdays. And this allows teachers the time that they need to prepare, prepare all these lessons. Because don't forget, now teachers are going to be not only teaching in class, but they're also simultaneously providing these online opportunities as well. So they need time to plan that, prepare that, prepare those lessons, deliver them, video, not videotape, excuse me, record them, to make sure that things are going well. It's also going to be important that teachers are still able to go to IEP meetings, we're able to do evaluations, we're able to support some of those students who are high need students who still might be coming in the building even on Wednesdays. So there's all kinds of things that, that teachers will be doing on Wednesdays, but they need that time to really prepare, again, a very strong hybrid program. Another option, which is similar to the one you just saw, just means that the same students are in school Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. And then they swap the next week. So this is similar to the last one. And then this one is in the mornings, groups A and C, again, so half the students without high needs and the students with high needs are in, in school learning on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then during, during the morning, our groups B and D are actually doing remote learning. And then during, during the morning, our groups, um, B and D are actually doing remote learning. But then in the afternoon, cohort A and C would go to a remote learning environment. While our afternoon classes for our B and D groups would actually be live online classes. So, and then again, they swap on Thursdays and Fridays. And this is even, uh, becomes even more complex. Um, uh, this again is, uh, making sure that, that it's the same now for Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays for the week. So it basically keeps the same groups, so we have two weekly schedules. Uh, and as I was doing this, after I put together these drafts, I realized that we might actually have a, a group that wants to go Thursday, Friday, then Monday, Tuesday, so they have four days kind of in a row, but kids are still going every week. So that's another option that we'll be putting together and, and put out there to folks. But these are the types of options that we have as we're looking at bringing kids back to school in a hybrid model. Um, we're gonna be getting a lot of input from, uh, different constituents. I want teachers to be able to weigh in. Teachers haven't even really had a, um, chance to weigh in on which one, which ones of these models would, uh, would best work for them. So I want all constituents and stakeholders to be able to, to, uh, voice their opinion. Um, so to wrap up, I just wanna say we're at kind of the end of our, um, uh, planning process. But we are going to be creating our frequently asked questions right after we, right after we submit our, uh, our, uh, preliminary plan. Um, but for July thirty-first, we're putting up something so we can have frequently asked questions. So as people ask questions, we'll, you know, you can ask questions on a site, and then we'll make sure to post those questions and the answers. Uh, we'll continue to do surveys, um, of all of our, of all of our different constituents. And I just ask the, you know, for your patience and understanding, as we redesign how we do school. Every aspect of our operation is, has been affected by this pandemic, every single aspect. And it's an overwhelming task to, to make all these changes. Uh, as teachers come back, we're gonna be working closely with them to, again, incorporate their views of their particular classroom and, and how, how they operate in their classroom. So, um, I thank you. Are there any further questions?
Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. It's surely a lot of work.
Yeah, well, luckily I have a good team. All right. Well, that concludes that portion of the agenda.
Uh, Mark, do you need a vote from us on approving the initial plan or, uh, hold off on that until the August tenth?
No, so the, the preliminary plan, we should have a vote, um, as to whether or not you accept the idea of going back to school in a hybrid model with a, with two weeks start, starting out with two weeks of remote learning, but then really going hybrid after the two weeks.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Um, I just wanted to note that, um, you know, this is just, this is for submitting the full piece to Desi with the fact that we're saying we're leaning towards the hybrid, well, remote slash hybrid model, basically a hybrid model. So, um, but I think that's important to clarify that piece.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Is there any other discussion on the motion? Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put them added to the vote. Uh, Mr. Abay. You're muted, so just remember to unmute yourself.
Oh, I think you have to unmute him.
Yeah, I have to unmute him. I can't unmute him.
Plan two, two.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes, plan two.
Uh, Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz?
Yes, plan two.
And Mrs. Belaven?
Yes, plan two.
Here is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is number three, one, five, eight, approval of the annual school calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty. There, Dr. Pellegrino.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. All right, so I'm gonna share my screen again. All right. So this is, I, I really had no idea, um, until just two, a couple days ago, how much our school calendar would be impacted. Uh, and so it was just a couple days ago that the, that the commissioner came to the agreement with the state level unions on reducing the number of school days to one hundred and seventy. And, uh, again, the nine hundred and ninety hours and nine hundred hours, uh, respectively for, um, uh, secondary and elementary students. So with that said, we put together some, some drafts of what a calendar might look like. And, you know, originally, the, the thought was, these, these professional development days absolutely have to go in the front of the calendar, because that's the whole point, is to get people ready to go. Um, but the union also came up with, with an idea for the calendar, and I wanted to make sure that I just presented that here. Um, because that would, um, that would also be a viable option. Um, I don't think we should vote on the calendar for tonight. I think I should lay some of these options out, and again, we really haven't had time to respond to the, the calendar changes um, in a thoughtful enough, um, way to make a final decision. And I, I really don't feel I can adequately recommend one over the other, because I think they all have, um, strong points. And I think there may be better ways, although these are some ways to do it, I think there may be better ways that are out there. And I wanna make sure, again, we're putting our best foot forward and we're supporting our students. Um, so this was the, the initial idea of the, of the ten days. And what you see here is our school calendar with student, with teachers returning on August twenty-fourth. With, as you see, the, um, the now ten days of, of professional developments uh, at the beginning that the, that the commissioner has just given us. But we also have four full-day professional development days throughout the year. Um, two, excuse me, three of those are usually in the beginning of the year, and then ones in March. What we've done is we've consolidated those. So professional development days that are full days would then go through the, through, um, September eleventh. Which would mean that students actually return to school in a remote model for two weeks. So from the fourteenth to the twenty-fifth, they would participate in remote learning. And then by the twenty-eighth, they would then participate in a hybrid model. Now, again, I'm presenting this in a preliminary way, we're still negotiating with the union, so, um, you know, things are still in motion um, as they have been in the entire summer. But that's what this would look like. So students would return on the fourteenth for remote learning, and then by the twenty-eighth, they'd be in a hybrid model, which would give us the time that we need to support teachers in practicing, you know, preparing to practice remote learning. And then when they're actually doing it, to make sure, because when you train someone to do something that they're actually not doing yet, it's much harder for them to really learn it and to change how they do things. Whereas once they start remote learning and we give them the support they need while they're doing it, they would have the, um, they would have the questions. They would know what to ask, they would know, um, what they, what they need in terms of supports or technological devices. So, um, I just think that that would be very helpful, because the hybrid model is, like I said, half, having its remote. So it's important that we do that well. Um, the, this second one, um, it was, oh, I'm sorry, you know what, one thing I do wanna mention. On that first model, the last day of school would be June tenth, would be the, um, hundred and seventy-first day. So, um, which is a Thursday. Um, the model the union put forward, um, was instead of starting on the twenty-fourth, to start on the thirty-first with ten days of, um, professional developments. Students would return on the fifteenth of September, and they would then do two weeks of, um, uh, remote learning. And then teachers would have those other four days that I talked about that they have during the school year. Those professional development days would be twen, the twenty-ninth through October second for teachers to prepare to then receive students again. So, well, in this particular model, uh, we have ten days of professional developments, two weeks of remote learning, four days of professional development, no students, and they're not in school days, and then we would go into, um, a hybrid model. Um, and so I thought this was, this was an interesting way to do it, and it may support teachers better again. I'm gonna want, I think we're gonna want more inputs, so I think this needs to be part of a survey to parents and the teachers to see what would, again, serve our stakeholders best. Uh, then I, I came up with a third model, which is, uh, excuse the, the phrase, but a hybrid of the two, uh, which would still be starting on the twenty-fourth with ten days of professional development going through the fourth. Students would start remote learning on the eighth for two weeks. Then we would use our four days of professional development before students came back to a hybrid model. So it's similar to the other one, um, but our, our ending day stays at the tenth. And in the model the uni, the union had proposed, the last day would be the, um, the seventeenth. So those are three models. Again, I, I don't, I'm not recommending one over another at this point. I haven't thought this through enough, and I haven't, um, really taken in the perspective of, of other people, which would really inform, um, which way I'm leaning for the schedule. Are there any comments or questions, concerns? Um, any, um, thoughts on when we need to have this piece done? Because I'm cognizant of the fact that parents are planning right now, and they really wanna know when this, um, when this has to happen. So, uh, you know, when this, I'm sorry, when their kids go back to school. What are we looking at for a timeline, do you think, to vote on a new calendar?
I think no later than, uh, August tenth, when we do the, the final plan.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, that I think when, when we decide what plan we're gonna stick with, I think we should have that date so that it makes it easier. Um, obviously, with this all kind of happening this week, it makes it a little hard. Um, and I do think it's important, because honestly, um, I go back and forth between two different ones at this point, so, um, I think it is, it's important to have the input from everyone too, so.
Okay. Right, so what, we're just, we're gonna move on that piece quickly. Um, that's prioritized for me, that, the, the school calendar might be a survey on its own, because we need to get it out. And it, I know, I know it seems like we should be able to do that really quickly, but we can design a survey quickly, but to design a good survey, it takes a, um, a, some thought um, in terms of how we ask the questions, to make sure we're getting at the right information and we're, you know, good information in, good information out. So, all right, thank you. So we'll move on this, um, relatively quickly. All right, great. Thank you.
There being no objection from the members of the school committee, we will carry this on to the next round. Next item on the agenda is final comment, members of the school committee, Mr. Abay.
Wait, wait, Mike, excuse me, mayor, we have to do the surplus.
Oh, my apologies. Yeah, is there, uh, any, uh, new business to?
Yeah, it's just the review of the surplus list. I think Mark has a copy.
Yeah, I do, it's, um, Oh, my goodness. I think I accidentally signed out. Of course I did, right?
School committee is gonna stand in a, uh, brief recess until this, uh, is all settled up. Thank you.
Did I send this to you guys?
You did.
As a Google Doc or as a, as a doc, a separate document?
It was in the email, um, that was separate and a Google Doc.
I think we can just.
Yeah, I mean, we can just vote on it, because we see, we all have it.
Oh, yeah, I can't. So if I sign out, it stops the YouTube account.
Yeah, don't stop the YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I move that we accept the surplus list of equipment and furniture as published by the superintendent's office.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz, we were in a brief recess there. I'm just waiting to hear back from the cable commission.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we are live again, so it being eight twenty-six, I will, uh, reconvene the meeting of the Gardner School Committee, Mr. Schwartz.
I move that, uh, we accept the list as published by the super, the surplus list of, of equipment in school furniture as published by the superintendent's office.
There a second for the motion?
My second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Pelaven. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Um, I just wanted to ask, though, why, um, so the superintendent can explain to us why they wanted to move some of this, like what's the plans are.
So, um, we received a grant that's, um, right now I can't, um, it's not finalized. But, um, I'm excited to say that we should be getting some equipment coming into the, the school district, um, to, um, uh, to help in, uh, curriculum, and I can't wait till we can publicly announce, um, uh, what that is. Um, but moving out some of these old things, and, you know, frankly, there are things that should have been gone a, a while ago. There are things that are falling apart and of, of no value. I will say the, um, there is a piece of equipment on there that's worth some money, so I think it's important that, um, you know, we look to how we're doing that. That's not, I don't think that's just scrap metal. I, I'm wondering if we do an auction, so I will be working with the, um, um, with, uh, Josh Cormier on that.
Any other discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, we can vote. Mr. Abay. Uh, Mr. Abay, we will come back to you. It appears as though you're frozen. Uh, Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Pelaven?
Yes.
Mr. Abay. Mr. Abay. Mr. Abay will be marked present for this vote. This vote will be recorded as for yeas, one present. Oh, Mr. Abay, there was two. Well. Jim?
Mr. Abay, do you wanna vote on the surplus? Oh, he's unmuted.
Last, uh,
Oh, there you go.
Last may sound, so.
You're, you're on now.
Your vote for the, uh, declaration of surplus property.
Oh, comment.
There you go. Um, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, final comments of the members of the school committee. Mr. Abay, would you like to go first? Mrs. Hurst, would you like to go first?
I wanted to thank Dr. Pellegrino and his staff for their tireless commitment to the students of the city of Gardner. And I know that, um, at times, social media has not been kind. Um, so I just ask people to kinda look outside yourselves once in a while and, um, your own situations and try to understand that everyone's working as hard as we can and to be safe.
Uh, Mrs. Cormier?
Yes, um, I wanna echo what Mrs. Hurst just said. I wanna just thank everybody, um, in the, the school department right now who's working so hard on putting this together. That was an incredible presentation tonight. So much information was included, and I really appreciate that. And I'm thinking the people of Gardner appreciate that. I know there's a lot of questions out there. Um, something that's been on my mind, um, as a parent, and, um, also looking at that presentation from the school committee side, is every child's an individual, and every child needs something different for their education. And I think that what you laid out will provide for that, and I'm appreciative of that. Um, there's no easy answers right now, but I feel like we do have some good solutions coming our way, so thank you.
Mr. Schwartz?
Again, I thank Dr. Pellegrino with all the surveys, uh, that have been published and, and the community members have responded. Uh, probably the, the highest numbers I've ever seen in, in surveys. And they need to continue to do that with the subsequent surveys that are going, going to be published by the school district. Um, thanks again for a lot of the hard work, uh, and to the community. Like Mrs. Hurst said, there's a lot of criticism out there. Before you make the criticism, make sure that you're accurately informed with the proper information before you say something. And if you have a question, you know, if the questions don't come out here, we can't answer them. So we need your questions, we need your concerns to be expressed to us. Call us on the school committee. I get very few calls, if any, so please bother us. That's why we get paid. Thank you.
Mr. Abay?
I, I think he's left us.
Ah, Mrs. Pelaven?
Yes, I'd like to echo the thank yous to everyone as well. Because obviously, I was part of some of the the district team. And just, you know, I mean, it was a, it's a huge process and a huge undertaking, and I think everybody needs to keep in mind that we are truly revamping the entire education system and trying to do it in a short period of time in the middle of COVID right now. So, you know, I I think we're I I think the superintendent has taken in all the concerns that I've heard at the different meetings that I've been a part of, and, you know, is trying to balance that out and including staff and students' needs and their concerns and you know, obviously, the other part of this is, is depending on what happens, things could change at any moment, as we found out just Monday, changing from one eighty to one hundred and seventy days. So you know, there's always the possibility that even decisions that we may make at some point can the governor can step in and change those decisions that we make as well if something were to change with the positive test results around the state. So, yeah, it's just a constant work in progress and where, you know, the amount of guidance we've received at this point, I think, is probably upwards of three to four hundred pages. So just trying to digest all of that and then cross reference all of it to come up with plans, I think that the process that has started and where we are now, we're in a good place.
Mr. Abay, I see you've rejoined us. Would you like to add anything for your final comments? You are unmuted, so you should be able to go.
I think you lost sound.
I will give mine if you come back. Oh, there you go. If you come back, we will certainly come back to you if you'd like. But I would just like to say thank you and echo the member, the sentiments of the school committee members here. This is my first meeting as a member of the school committee under the Gardner City Charter. The mayor acts as the chair of the school committee members, as many of you know. But in case anyone isn't aware, the mayor chairs the meeting and helps run the meeting, but doesn't participate in the discussion of the items and only votes in the event of a tie. So I just also wanted to add in my sentiments towards this whole situation. This is something that none of our school districts have ever had to deal with before in terms of technological means, in terms of just a global pandemic to this size, to the amount of guidance that we've been receiving on a daily basis as late as today at five P M. Got to give all the credit in the world to Dr. Pellegrino for all of the work that he's put into helping us get to where we are and to all of our teachers for helping get our students through the spring semester that we just had and helping to get ready for this upcoming school year. I fully appreciate all that our educators are doing on the ground on the front lines of this, if you will. I was happy to see the two week remote learning at the front in my discussions with Dr. Pellegrino when I first took office. All of the immediate back to school options or full hybrid options right off the bat. And all of those discussions, it seemed like we would have to rush to get something done in order to be able to get that off the ground at that time, just due to the current regulations. And if there's anywhere that we shouldn't be rushing, it's with our students and our education system to make sure that we're truly working to protect and promote the health and safety of our students and our staff members, our teachers, and so on from there at the school. So again, I really appreciate all the work that everyone at the district has done, and I have full faith in Dr. Pellegrino and all of my colleagues here that we can have a safe start and healthy start to the school year and a successful school year when we get to May next year. So thank you very much.
Mike, if I could just add one, one thing too, that that I forgot to mention, I think that's really important. Some of our unsung heroes are our people who are in a check department. We have right now, we're down staffed. We actually have three people in the department. But Bob O'Keefe, you know, leads his team very well, and I was really truly amazed at how well he was able to pull pull this off to make sure kids have what they needed at homes during the remote learning, and he's been planning diligently and very thoughtful in the apps that we're purchasing and what we're doing to make sure that we have the infrastructure to make sure next year, we're going to be ready to go one to one. So with kids, because that's what's really going to be necessary. So I just wanted to mention that, that he's been very thoughtful, the whole group has, and we're trying to get every grant we can. Courtney Dunn's working diligently behind the scenes again to make sure that we have all the grant money to make sure every kid has a device as well as internet connectivity. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yes, Bob O'Keefe has been great. I found out when I started here, he was going to visit the homes of students who didn't have internet access to help bring them hotspots to make sure that they were still getting their internet activity during the height of the pandemic, so the whole I T department at the school district, and like you said. And I am also very excited for when we can finally publicly talk about this very exciting news that we got that you mentioned. I can't wait. But with all of that said, I'll adjourn the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made by Attorney Pelavin, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Mrs. Hurst.
Hi.
Mrs. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Abay. Mrs. Pelavin.
Yes.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all very much, and I look forward to speaking with you shortly.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.